Next to you, Eric Olah.
Or the eleven by seventeen just in the packet is okay too.
Yeah, that.
You know, when I, when I work on it, because I was working on it from home and when you're on this laptop and you do the print preview, it looks good. And then unless you actually print it out and like, you know, maybe it's got eleven by seventeen at home. So I was looking at it going, I think this is readable. And then I printed it and I was like, no, it's not. So yeah, but anyhow.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Patrice is serving as G O today. So G O's out. And so we have the real city clerks.
On that thing, hopefully he's gonna work.
We'll be on our best behavior.
Yes, of course.
Good. Ready to go? Okay. Good. Well, welcome to the regular meeting this Wednesday evening, May third. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're holding meetings in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. In person at the meeting, complete a request to speak for him and submit to the recording secretary. Join the Zoom by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone in participation can be done by calling four oh eight six three eight zero nine six eight with the conference ID eight nine two two zero eight three three five zero six, passcode four nine five seven eight three. Press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the comment period for that specific item. And first up, we'll go to approval of the regular meeting minutes for March first, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion for approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Patrice, for a roll call, please.
With pleasure. Council, I was a council member, sorry. Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Massey?
I.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallnick?
Yes.
And Chair Health?
Hi.
Great. So next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff or follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Do we have anyone on the line?
I have one attendee, no hands raised.
Great. Thanks for joining. So with that, Patrice, we will turn it over to you to hear about our, our process refresher for the commission.
Wonderful. Let me go ahead and share this if I could. So you know how you get really used to your particular mouse and setup and everything. And then you're in here with a different mouse and you're going, how come this one wiggles funny? So anyway, thank you very much, first of all, for having me come here. Today, we're doing a show on the road to just kind of make sure everybody, after they've been in the seat for a little while, have a refresher about the boards and commissions and just a kind of a high level overview. See if you have any questions to give you an opportunity to double check about process and procedures and feel free to, although it's not, I'm not recommending you try and stump the clerk, but you can absolutely ask me anything. So with that, I put the copy of the PowerPoint in front of you. All in all, San Mateo has ten active boards and commissions, and I think all of you are familiar with them. The primary role of a commissioner is to increase that public input. That's number one. You are in an advisory role. You participate in the determination of city policies and in procedures around a certain topic. And of course, your topic area is park and recreation. Everything from, I hear about heritage trees all the time to, you know, the master plan and civic parks and everything else that you do right there. You serve as an advisory to the city council. And we're, we're making a point of reviewing that with all of the boards and commissions right now because you, you're on this commission because you care about parks and you care about the recreation program. And you have an interest in that. And that's fabulous. And that's why we want you here. Sometimes there's a little bit of advocacy that can happen too. And then that is a great place to do your advocacy somewhere else. Your advisory role is here on the board. The advocacy happens with other types of groups, not in a governmental get the business done brown act kind of body. So, but we just want to touch on that for a moment too. You give, provide a vehicle for public input, which is really important. You're oftentimes, we hear from our boards and commission members about things that are happening out in the community because you're out there with your ear to the ground, meeting people. And it, it may not bubble up to council right away, but you'll know before us. And we appreciate the fact that you're, you're having an opportunity to winnow through that and, and give a chance for those items to come forward. So we know what the community is thinking. So we appreciate that very much. The, the wonderful thing about our boards and commissions, and we could not function without the different boards and commissions we have, is there's just too much work in a city and in a city our size for one governing body to handle it all. So breaking it up into categories for, you know, the park and recreation, the sustainability and infrastructure, the planning commission, the community relations commission into those subject area matters allows every important item that comes forward to have enough time to be heard and to be heard well. If we had it, if we did everything at the city council level, we would be here till midnight every week trying to get through it all. And so this is really critically important. Plus, you bring specialized information about that, about your particular role, your category to, and you can do that deeper dive. Really dive deeply into it. So thank you for that, too. That's what council appreciates, speaking on behalf of council, and what I think also all of the residents and community members here appreciate too. It is much, I don't know, it's much, we hear all the time that you're too formal in the city council meeting and one minute, what do you mean one minute? To talk and to be able to come here and have a friendly atmosphere where you can really talk about something and it's not as intimidating. You're not going into the council chamber where they're on a raised dais, looking down at you and everybody's at your back. So I, we think that this, this model works really, really well for a little bit closer engagement with the residents of the city of San Mateo, because it gives you less of that formality. So, and I'm going to just say, if you, any questions, any way along the way, please just stop me. Okay. You don't have to wait till the end, even though I have a Q and A slide. So we have our council up here now. Overview of the city council, the city council forms goals and objectives for the city. You know, that's during the goal setting session. We usually have that late January, early February. And that's the policy direction for the city. So at that goal setting session, they're setting up the goals for the next fiscal year. And our fiscal year is from July one to June thirtieth every year. So in February, we had the last goal setting and from that, staff takes the list of the priorities, the strategic priorities for the city that council has directed for the next year, and they form a strategic priority list. So we take that goal setting meeting and then staff assigns resources to it and balances it and see, you know, is this going to be two departments working on this? How many staff hours? And then brings it back to council for a study session to let them know that there might be some shuffling at that time based on resource allocation or other needs that have come up. And then once we get the feedback from that staff adjusts again, and then we bring it to city council. It has been approved for the next fiscal year, the strategic direction we received in February. And so we've got the, the walk, work program for the next year. So all staff does, they take that program and that leads into your staff, what staff brings forward for you to consider. So they're setting the big policy up here and then staff gets their work program directives. And then that's what comes forward and the staff reports for you and, and for your consideration in front of your commission. For instance, you know, it was absolutely on the council goal setting to do a master plan for Central Park. That became a goal one year. And so then when council was committed to it, then they committed the money to it. So it's just like everything, you know, lines up and chops up. And there are, there is a fight for resources at the city too. So that's the process. Council sets the city budget. And they do the capital improvement program too, which you're going to hear a little bit more about tonight. They allocate all the public resources and what I think is really important to do is that we have, you have an opportunity to also place items on your agenda. We'd follow the same process for all the boards and commissions. That's so a member of the public, no matter which meeting they go to, they have familiarity with how the process is going to go. So it feels, you know, I know that after consent calendar, there's going to be public comment for items on the agenda. I know where that is. And it's the same at every, whether it's the library board or here. So we did that conscientiously to make it a little bit easier to manage, to make sure we are all following the same processes and to apply consistency across the board. So that's one of the efforts of doing the boards and commissions, rules and procedures. So back in twenty fifteen, we had removed by resolution, all of the individual board and commission members bylaws. And instead, council adopted the rules and procedures that we'd all follow the same because we had a lot of different practices happening that weren't working out well for us. Some commissions were making people sign in, which is actually against the law. So we, we, we had a real learning process that in this way, it allows us to help each other, work together on making sure that, you know, especially with new technology where we all have to know, you know, Zoom and everything else, it, it helps us be a little bit on top of things more. So we do, and council appreciates your commenting on items that come before them too. And also any items that you want to bring forward to them. They like hearing from their commissioners. So I've been directed to please make sure they know, we know we want to hear from them. So you guys, they want to hear from you. So that's a little bit about, you know, where we've come from here. It's to make a, our goal is to make sure that we're doing everything properly, that we're doing it in a way that reaches our transparency goals and bringing involvement from the citizenry and the residents here so that everybody has a voice at the table as much as practical. And so we're doing that throughout. There is a commission and staff relationship. So we're talking about this a little bit because we've had several, sometimes a commission wants to get into the operational aspects of things. And you are very much policy setting within your subject matter area. And also deciding the items that have brought forward for your input from staff when, when they request. Oh, you know, I'm not sure. Maybe like, should the dog park be here? Should the dog park be there? So when you're noodling through those or whatever the heritage tree things are about, that's.
Where the trees?
So, so we, we want to honor that, that, you know, here staff has an operational lane where they bring forward those items. You have a policy setting and direction lane. Sometimes that's confusing for some of our commissioners. Just because they, they, they want to do more. And I understand that inclination to want to do more. You're serving on a commission. You care about this topic and, you know, how, how else can I get involved? Sometimes that's when that advocacy lane creeps in a little bit to the advisory role. So it's our role as city staff to provide support to commissions. We do the agenda packet. We make sure we're meeting all the brown act regulations from our side. And that the descriptions, we're required to have a certain kind of description on all of our agendas. Has to be written for layman. So it can't be confusing. You can't have acronyms and government speak in there. It has to be something that anyone can pick up and understand, oh, I do have an interest in that. So staff, that's our responsibility and we work hard on making sure that that happens well and that the action is clear. What action are you going to be taking? That has to be really clear. So again, commissioners do not have authority related to administrative or operational issues. You can't direct staff to initiate a program or conduct studies without city council approval. So what that means is that staff, because they're working off council-directed strategic visions and they're bringing forward reports in their work program, their own work program. From what they've agreed to, they're going to bring forward things that council's already said, yeah, let's work on that. So there's already that piece taken care of. That doesn't mean that you can't have an idea that might have to be vetted back up to city council, especially if there's significant resources involved. But for the most part, the things that we're bringing forward already have gone through that route because of the process we have with the goal setting session. So that's just one thing to be aware of. And there is sometimes a need from commissions. They want to do their own work program. And it, it, because staff is bringing forward what council has directed as far as policies and where the strategic priorities, you, that work program is set already. Actually, having a secondary work program just for the commission, it feels like a level, another layer that's not needed because it doesn't really produce anything because staff is driving forward and bringing that along. They're doing in their own operational work program, what we're supposed to be bringing to the commission. Does that make sense? Looking for head nods. Okay, so, so that's, that's again, just defining the lane between operations and policy driven advisory. Sorry, this is so hard to read. This is inter-commission relationship. So there are, as I said, ten active commissioners. Each one has a specific scope. I don't know if you know what your mission statement says, but it says, the park and recreation commission makes recommendations to the city council on acquisition, development, beautification and maintenance of public parks, landscape, resources, public recreation facilities, budget and programs of park and recreation activities. So that's pretty a lot. When you look at all of that, that's what's published as your mission statement. It's really important to always be mindful of your scope. Sustainability has their own scope. Planning commission definitely has a scope and they have a different set of rules because they are quasi judicial in their decision-making on land use. So we bring that up just to make sure that everybody is really clear about, you know, the, the reason for being here. And we have in the past, this is how sustainability and the, the sustainability commission, they had formed twenty, thirteen, fourteen, and then Public Works, they had this aha realization that the, they, they were taking on the same things and moving into crashing into each other a lot. And so council member Gothols went and talked to them. He was the liaison to the commission. And he realized, you know what? We created this mess in council because their two, their scopes are too similar. And so we're actually lengthening the process because now people are having to go to two different commissions. So they merged them. He proposed merging them. And that has worked out really well to make it a little bit, so we can always talk about, you know, like is, you could talk with Joanne and, you know, ask about, you know, is our scope appropriate? Are we working outside the lane or how come we keep hearing planning commission is taking this up? And I think this is in our land, you know, you definitely talk about that and do be aware that the liaison assigned to your commission from the council. And I want to say it's Rob Newsom, is available, you know, if you ever want to have him come to a meeting and talk. We tell them not to come to a meeting unless it's more of a social or just a one-time introduction because we found in the past, when a, when a sitting council member would go like to every commission meeting, the commission would kind of, they'd end up having two bites of the apple, the council member would, because they'd be engaging and people would kind of look and say, oh, okay, he's nodding. Let's, you know, we don't want that. We want you to have the freedom and the ability to do your decision-making completely on your own without undue influence from an elected. So be mindful of the purview of other commissions and there is some natural overlap that can occur, especially on development projects. But it's really important that we try and mindfully manage that only one commission takes a leadership position on making a decision at a time. It's not happening on a dual track because there could be overlap or miscommunication or confusing to whatever item is being brought forward. So that's, that is why we do that. So, oops. So the council had their priority sessions and just, I think I've talked on this already, but it's to inform the budget and department work plans for the fiscal year. So the park and recreation department has two initiatives in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four council priorities, which is implementing the Central Park master plan. First, it was getting it on there. And then it was hiring now implementing. So it's been several years and also provide no cost administration products at all recreation facilities. That actually rose to the level of a council priority. So there are those two items on there. In addition, in tandem with Public Works, developing a funding strategy for existing infrastructure plants. And you're going to probably hear a little bit about that tonight, too. I don't know. It's still in your thunder? Okay.
And so Patrice, is that an example of something that sustainability, infrastructure would also be hearing?
It could be parts of it. I know Public Works as a department itself, they, they manage the C I P projects for us. And so they, but I know Joanne sits on the C I P committee in addition to, I think, city manager's office and Public Works. I keep asking to be invited. Have you seen council chamber? It is ripe for a C I P project. So anyway, but yeah, so I think it's the Public Works Department more than sustainability and infrastructure commission. So that's a little bit about that. I had fun finding a pretty picture of the park. There are so many to choose from. So we talked about the rules already. I put a copy of the rules in front of you, just so you had another set of them. That defines the authority, your duties, the conduct, meeting format, agendas, minutes, communication, and the commissioner selection process, which I'm sure you all remember, having gone through that. And your council liaison is Rob Newsom, and he is available to come to you if you guys have a need. And Joanne or Nicholas can manage that or through me for you, get them there if you need him for something. I do want to say that we update this pretty regularly. It is mirrored on the city council guidelines. So we've been having a lot of discussions about that. And so they, they do tend to go hand in hand together. When I bring them to the city council for an update, we usually bring both of them. Like the last update in September twenty twenty-two was about changes in the Brown Act law that had to do with communication and social media that we needed to build into our, and it was applicable to electeds as well as officials, appointed officials. So we keep an eye on that all the time. It's almost getting to the point where I do an annual update, a sort of a cleanup, a laws change here or something like that. So any questions on the rules? No, you guys all seem pretty familiar with it. So you know about your Brown Act body. It means seventy-two hours in advance for a regular meeting posting, twenty-four hours for a special meeting. Posting still is on that bulletin board outside the council chambers because the law was written in nineteen fifty-three. And they've never removed that condition, even though everybody goes to the website to get it now. So the agenda description has to have the layman. You can only discuss items that are on the agenda. The public comment process is very well defined. The main thing about the Ralph and Brown Act, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it, is that you can't engage in discussions or decision-making outside of the public process. All decisions that you do acting as this body have to happen here in this room. You can gather information. You can take it in. You just can't commit to anything and you can't say you're going to vote one way or the other. And it's clear because you want to get the staff presentation. You want to hear, maybe it's an applicant presentation too. And then there could be public testimony. So you may have talked to a neighbor or two who had a really strong opinion about something that's coming before you. But until you hire from everybody, you know, you still need to let that gel and process and make the decision after that entire process happens. So that's why we define it so very specifically. So I, I enjoy, maybe that's the wrong word. I do appreciate preamble's in, to the bills that are in government code. And I find it really helps to find the intent. So the people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. So the public, the city created this instrument, which is your park and recreation body. And they, they demand, the public demands the right to be able to be here and see the decisions and to see what you're hiding or not hiding. So that's, that's the, the thirty-minute presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you'd like a deeper dive on anything, or if you would like a refresher on the Brown Act or Public Records Act, if you've been involved in that lately, we can always schedule a city attorney, one of our attorneys to come and do that for you too. So.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Fields?
Patrice, it's always a pleasure to see you. Thank you for this presentation. I guess I'm curious if there's anything you anticipate coming up, changing anything that you've just presented.
I, yeah, we know that council is interested in looking at her is directed that we're going to do a research project just this past Monday night on a code of conduct. So I'm not sure what that process is going to be or how long it's going to take. We're figuring out who's going to be working together on that. That will be a cross-departmental team that brings that information forward. What we develop for the city council to consider will also be developed for the rules and procedures code of conduct in that document for the boards and commissions also. So we do anticipate that to come forward. I would think it's going to be three to six months is my guess. That's just a guess. So.
And so then you'll be coming back and presenting.
So here's the changes. Yeah, I'm happy to do that anytime.
And do you know if there's any consideration, I, we've heard sort of some rumblings of having one or two youth commissioners who would be on Parks and Rec? Do you know?
Yes, yes.
Kind of what the status of that is and how it would apply to any of these roles?
Absolutely. So there's a couple of things that we do need to do. We had a meeting about it today. We have received direction to have ex officio youth members on this board of commission, two seats. We had it plugged in to do in this next budget cycle. But what we've done is we've outlined the recruitment process. We're going to work through the Youth Activities Council, YAC, as one of our outreach. We've talked to the high schools to see about going and putting up flyers, recruiting there. We thought we'd let the kids, the kids, the youth get through the, the school session and that we would do that recruitment sort of more summer coming into fall. And we anticipate then sitting, sitting, seating your new youth advisory commissioners sometime in the fall. That's what, that's what our timeline is right now. We've got a draft application process. We looked at what other cities did for, because we had to have a permission from parents for them too. And so I think we're, we're feeling like we're getting there. We had some outreach from some of our youth leaders who have been coming to council meetings. Another thing, asking about and offering to help with recruitment. And they had a couple of ideas around that too. And I think we were going to put an ad in the rec guide, maybe. Yeah. And so we've, we've got a, you know, we'll put it up on the homepage. We'll do a social media push when we're ready. Yeah, and so we've, we've got a, you know, we'll put it up on the homepage. We'll do a social media push when we're ready with the applications and everything. Thank you.
Yeah. Snow Hall?
Yeah, I've got a couple. One of the things I wonder about is as a commissioner member, when I go either to another commission or see council. Are we required to say, I'm a member of Parks and Rec, but I'm speaking on my behalf? Or can you say, my name is?
Yeah.
This is my.
We, we ask that you say that if you're talking about something. That is sort of in your purview, to say, I'm a park and rec commissioner, but I'm speaking on my own behalf.
Okay.
And then, of course, as a commissioner, if you are, your body, this body has taken action on something, you only represent that few.
Yeah.
You know, you don't, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, um, if it's your coming because a mega mansion is being built next to you and you wanna comment on it, go for it. You just say yourself and say, hey.
Okay.
It's gonna ruin my shade.
Yeah, okay. One question, um, which is kind of gonna come up on our, our next item, which is financial, uh, or the, you know, the fiscal. Is the, the developments and their role in parking lufies. And we haven't had this discussion a long time, but various times we've had, um, where it's come forth with, uh, uh, hey, we're gonna build a. A statue with interest to city that we're using the parking lufies. Or, um, this developer wants to come and present, because I know some of the development parking lufies, they can do a, a onsite amenity. Or they can pay in. Refresh our memory on when, when those come to us, like, is it? If, is, if, if I'm a developer and I'm gonna build a, a big C block of, of stuff and I say, I'm gonna put a park right in the middle. Does that ever come to us or is that just all handled with staff? Or what's the process on that?
I'm gonna defer to, um. These two.
Yeah, right. So, um, usually what happens is that when we, um. So if you remember, we did the fee schedule presentation very recently. And there it spoke to the, um, park and youth fees depending on what, um, type of structure you're building. So if you're building a, uh, single, um, dwelling home, if you're building a, you know, two floor. And then for something like you are mentioning, it's a multi, multi-family, multi-unit family development. Um, and it's got a number, a financial number attached to it for the number of units that. Uh, which is multiplied by the number of units that you're building. So for the sake of the conversation, if you're building, um. A hundred units and the number is fifty thousand, then you've gotta pay, sorry, fifty thousand dollars per unit, then you've gotta contribute five million dollars. However, there is a mechanism, um, for you to claim credits. Um, that, um, it's in the municipal code and basically it's, it's very explicit as to what can be, um, included. What is excluded, how much, what the maximum credit that can be given. And, um, the facilities need to be, um, approved by, uh, the director. Um, and it's got a whole list of, um, different things. So currently we are looking at one where, um. For example, that we're trying to claim credits for numerous outdoor seating facilities. Which were basically, um. A bench, it was a little bit of open space around it. However, by the time, so we had to consider whether, you know, that actually considered, like, was considered open space or whether. That was just a setback, really. It wasn't open space. That was just, you know, and you just put a bench there. So we had to go through the whole process of calculating what each, how many square meters were actually being provided. Because don't forget that, um, the park and lufies are actually. The, um, the underlying calculation is that for every. For the number of people that you're bringing, you have to dedicate or give a certain amount of, of open space. And that is what those, the calculation is based on, unless I've lost the tape. So therefore those, the number of open space, the, the, the aggregation of all those open, um, space parcels that are on your. Development offset some of the costs. So we do that, to answer your question. It's part of the planning application and it is considered at that point. And then the mechanism works so that the fees need to be paid for those at the point of, um. Pulling the application. There is an appeal process, which at. Which point I'm guessing if anybody was to appeal, they would, um, it may land here for your consideration. But, um, we haven't had that for a number of years.
We did just talk about, um, projects that come before you and so we're working on trying to decipher. Because I know that a project has not come forward for input in quite a while.
Yeah.
So we're working through that, um, and probably have more information very soon about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly, sort of the Brown Act realm, when you have members of the public that come to open forum and raise a question. Where is the line of acceptable response to them? Because sometimes they'll come and say, you know, I, I really want you to talk about the golf course. And sometimes it'll be very easy to say, it's on the next agenda, come back, or we just talked about it two, uh, two meetings ago, go look at the, at the. And so, or, you know, Joanne, can you just talk about that? And where is that, where's that line of what's acceptable?
So basically, um, if it's a brief, so, so people do come and they, they ask a question. And they're looking for back and forth dialogue.
Yeah.
We, we wanna quote, we don't want back and forth dialogue.
Yeah.
Um, and so the best practice is to address the questions at the end. Thank you. We'll address it at the end of public comment. And then, you know, let them say whatever they wanna say. And then you say, staff, can you can respond with information on this briefly, briefly, briefly?
Yeah.
And, and it shouldn't evolve into a conversation among you guys.
Yeah.
The staff can say, you know, we do have that. It's available. You can watch the recording online. Or you can even direct a staff member like Nicholas, could you go help? Go outside and help them, you know, find where it is on the meeting or how to, how to get to a meeting. On the website or something like that, or we can follow up with you. You know, here's, we have your information on the speaker slip.
And I think that's usually the case is that someone on staff will follow up with you about your concern or question. For the read forward.
It can be a slippery slope, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying that, uh, in the process of this conversation amongst the commission members should be avoided. But I think, did I understand correctly, you're saying also that. Uh, conversation between commission members and members of the public should also be avoided, yes?
Yeah, you should avoid that. You should definitely not do that.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it's not considered a best practice. Number one, you're, you're actually in a formal hearing here. Um, it, that's appropriate in a town hall kind of a thing, an information gathering kind of thing. But when you're here in the meeting and because you're so tightly prescribed by the Brown Act on what you can take up. You could easily get off into a Brown Act violation because of something they're bringing up that was nowhere on the agenda. And then you have the next day, you know, a newspaper headline, you know, Park and Rec Commission talked about, um. Adding a new dog park over here and it wasn't agendized, you know?
And the other point that I would just make, um, to kind of, um, emphasize that is. Sometimes at the end of our meetings, we have reports and updates and sometimes. You all will ask questions from the prior meeting and I will be able to provide a response at the next meeting. If it's not agendized, it can't be a robust discussion. It can be, it can be a future agenda item if, you know, the response spurs that, but. Just I try and be mindful of a discussion spurring out of, um, a response to, you know, getting information as well. Yeah.
Kind of in a survey, when less on open forum, but more on an agendized item, remember the public. You know, sometimes members of the public will bring up points that we don't think of or whatever.
That's why public testimony is so valuable.
Yeah, and at time, you know, obviously we still avoid a back and forth. But it's acceptable to say, you know, that point you just brought up, could you elaborate on it? I didn't understand it, you know, can you, like, where? Where is there, uh, I mean, it, it's always, like you said, slippery slope, but, but is there a, a realm of?
If it's within the agendized item, if it's on, like, you're, you're talking about a dog.
Like the fiscal issue or something.
Yes, if it's here about, and, and. It was unclear what they were commenting on and you wanted to get more information. Yes, you could do it because it is agendized.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly, a comment, um, your, your point about us being advisory, I think is, is really important. I think it comes up probably once a year where, where one, one of us will get, you know, will, will. Get more into the advocacy or something and, and someone will say, oh, I wanna report on such and such. Um, and, and, um, staff is always very gracious to not correct us. I oftentimes think they should.
I think you were just giving permission.
Yeah, so, so like, what is there, like, I think they should, they should say, hey, remember your advisory. I mean, when it comes up and if I'm, if I'm not the one going off topic, I'll bring it up, um, but, or one of us will bring it up, but, but I think. Is that, are they allowed to? Is that their role?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, I will say that it's, uh. Sometimes from the staff seat here, sometimes it's a little bit difficult to know when to jump in, uh, on something and, um. So, so, so speaking from, for myself, sometimes I struggle with that. Uh, it, it could be anything procedurally from, uh, Madam Mayor, did you want to skip public comment? Or did you really wanna go forward with it? Or, um, you know, for, for, for council meetings. Between Drew, but mostly Prisana, the city attorney will come, jump in on, you know, oh, we're going off topic somewhere over here. I think with you, it's, um, Joanne who would probably interject to, to say that. You know, you know, this isn't, this is not our role. This is outside our scope. And, or this is another commission's scope and, you know. You can always, you, you guys all know, and you brought this up earlier, Eric, and you, you're a veteran commissioner, so you know all this too. Is, um, and I appreciate you sometimes bringing it up because that's why it's so important to have that, uh. Institutional background and knowledge on a commission who's been around and understand why it's important to do this or not do that. Is you can always, um, you know, go and talk on any topic. You, you have your full first amendment rights on everything, just because you're a commissioner, you don't lose any of that. You get to, you get to participate in everything, you know, it's just how you present yourself when you're participating.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
It's the best commission, so.
I had a question, but I think, I think it's not that important, so I think I'm gonna skip. And say no questions.
Few things. Um, back with these youth commissioners that we're going to get. My understanding from just what I read, the email that came around about it, um, is that these youth commissioners will be non-voting.
Yes.
Okay. We are often asked for our reaction to something. We don't do a formal vote. This doesn't vote on. But we, uh, I, I, an idea like, I think, was it the last meeting where we talked, or the meeting before, where we talked about. Um, changing the method of, of handling picnic reservations. Now, we didn't take a vote on that. You just asked us, well, what, what's your feeling about this? And I think we each responded, okay. If we ever see something like that come through, do the youth commissioners get input at that, in that way? They do, even though they're not supposed to be non-voting.
Yeah, they, they're not voting, but you're, you, the purpose of seating them on there is to have the youth perspective. And so hopefully their comments are with that lens. You know, um, when you're giving direction on an upcoming project or whatever, hopefully they're bringing. Ah, you know, this would be really important for the youth because of our skateboarding community or whatever. Um, you know, just to have that particular lens. That was the impetus for putting them on here is to have that particular viewpoint represented a little bit more. And I think it's fine for them to comment, even on items you're voting on. They just don't have a formal vote because they're not allowed by law. Because right now our charter does say you have to be an elector of the city, which means registered vote, which means eighteen years and over.
So yes, they were certainly hoping that they provide their feedback. And then we were, when we conduct the vote, it would be for the five commissioners.
Okay, but I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at is most of the time. It seems we express our, our take on, on something without a formal vote. And in that circumstance, basically anything short of a formal vote. Their, their commissioners and their, you know, so we are seven instead of being five, basically. That, that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, you are going to have seven people sitting up here. Um, it, when you do call a vote, only the five of you will vote, but they will, you know, they will, they're expected to have input. And provide that commentary. Um, you guys do set the direction though, so if they're providing. A lens about, you know, youth viewpoint of whatever the item is in front of you. I, you know, the, the direction, the formal direction still comes from the five of you.
That brings another question that just popped into my mind based on that comment. Would it be considered a quorum? If five commissioners are present, but the commissioners are not, so it's not.
Because they're ex officio.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So it's still.
They don't count.
Okay, okay.
And they're, okay, and their absence doesn't take away from.
No, what, and I, I will tell you, I did some research from other cities who have youth commissioners as ex officio members. Um, two things I heard consistently from four or five cities. Hard to recruit for. Attendance is an issue. So.
They're busy.
Yeah, they're busy. They are. That's exactly right. They're busy. So.
Can I probe at your question a little bit more?
Sure.
So, one, one of the things that we often do besides the feedback is we, we recommend to council. Right? But we don't often take a formal vote on that. I think that's what Chris was getting at is like. Are they part of that recommendation or should we start having formal votes on what we're recommending?
I would say the majority of the time that we're bringing something forward for council. And we would actually require a vote or a formalized recommendation. Um, even if it's nothing that you're approving, I would still try and ascertain what the recommendation was. Um, so I don't think it needs to be formalized. Um, it, it just will be reflected in what we provide information wise to the council.
Okay, yeah. I think what you'll see in your minutes too are that youth commissioner, blah, blah, provided comments. You know, something as brief as that. And they're just a note for the record that they were there, they were present and they provided information.
Okay.
I'm still not following. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's new to all of us.
Well, okay. Because, yeah, um, what you're talking about is exactly my concern. And that is, and maybe we, we should be changing our process as a result. That is, you're suggesting take more formal votes than we have been, but we have not tended to take votes. If an idea or a, a, a program, like, on something like the, the, the capital budget. I think we do actually take a vote on something like that. But there are a lot of other things that we get presented that we don't take a formal vote on. We just, you, you, you end up by saying, okay, well, what's the sense of the commission about this? And each of us will say, no, yeah, I'm for it, or no, I really don't like that idea or whatever. And so you end up, okay, well, you know, three commissioners said they were favored the idea and two said they had doubts. Okay. That's the, that's where the role of the youth commissioners is unclear. And that is, we have not taken a formal vote. But we've got seven people here. So what if the, they, you've got. Three of the commissioners who like the idea and two of them who don't.
You still have a.
And, and the two youth commissioners say they don't like the idea.
They don't have a vote, though.
Well, but it's not, but a vote has not been taken.
I, I think it, um, a lot of times, the staff brings something forth like that. And it's to get feedback in preparation for a future issue, uh, you know, a, a future report that will take a vote. And so I think that gets resolved. Like, I think it doesn't matter because, you know, that, that feedback is gathered. And then staff goes back and goes, you know, oh, you know, yeah, it was, three commissioners were okay with this, two were against and. Two of the youth, let's dive a little deeper on that youth thing. And then, you know, three months later, they come back and go, you know. You guys all thought this was great, but some of the comments came forth and we thought we'd explore this and, and we're making a different recommendation. Because ultimately, staff makes the recommendation at some point on, on a given thing and, and we say we agree or disagree. And so I think it's, even when they're asking our feedback, most often that comes, that comes back in a future meeting for a vote somewhere. So I, I don't think it's an issue.
I think we need to keep an eye on and, uh, but I, 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 I see this as a, as a potential problem.
Okay.
That, you know, and, and it's hard to, you know, we haven't done this before, so it's hard to say.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I thank you for bringing it up. I made a note about it and, uh, I'll look at, you know, if we draw up procedures for this, which probably. You know, if we draw up procedures for this, which probably we will need to do. Um, that we address that. In my head, I was thinking of it. Like, how we do the um, appointment subcommittee for a board and commission. It's the mayor. And the liaison to the commission who do the appointment. The staff liaison for that particular commission is there as an advisor. So they give advice in that process, but the decision-making is happening from the appointment subcommittee, which is defined as the mayor. And the liaison. So, so, you know, Joanne may have a full voice on, you know, her opinion there, and certainly can be persuasive. But um, the, but the, the, the actual appointment body is just those two.
Okay, well, I just, it, you know.
That's a good point. It's a good point.
Just something to, to raise.
Yeah, so what example is our last one with the picnic reservations? I don't think we took a formal. Vote on that, and it would be like a recommendation that we were making for the policy or not. So that's. That's an example, concrete example you can look at, but decide whether we need to do formal votes on that or not.
So you might, might need to do more votes. Just to make it more clear.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, um. We talked about uh, Brown Act and uh. Discussions and so forth. Um, is it still the case that an individual commissioner? Is free to contact staff directly and ask for information or discuss a, a particular subject or?
Absolutely. We want you to do that, especially, um, you know, um. If we've presented a staff report and maybe there's some, if you have questions about something, probably everybody has questions about that. And then we can get in front of it. The fact that you ask those questions is very, very helpful to us. Um, it also, y- you know, what you could be doing after you get your staff report, and you're trying, you know, you're, you're thinking of these questions. Absolutely talk to staff, talk to your liaison, go through that process, uh, you, I'm sorry, call. The commission liaison is Joanne. For this commission, so, uh, not, not, not the council liaison, sorry about that. Um, I saw your face. So I, the other thing is that the fact that you ask that may be an opportunity for us then to change the PowerPoint presentation. So that's a little bit clearer, to just refine it a little bit more. So you're part of that process of helping us bring forward. A good work product that will help and increase understanding. So, and, and I do think our practice, and I'll check with you, so city, one of my council members asked a question. If it is a, um, uh, we don't. Staff responding will copy all of council, so they all have the same information, but it's, yeah. So, so that, that, that just, you know, because if you have that question, probably other people have that question too. And that way, everybody's starting with the same information and the same baseline of information, but it's, it's. What we've run into a slippery slope on with Brown Act is a commissioner. Asking a question, copying the whole board, and embedding their comment in there about it. And that, that's, that would be a Brown Act violation. So just writing directly to staff, talking directly to staff, that's perfect.
Okay, um, writing, I mean, you can, you, obviously, you send your communication, copy people. But if you make a phone call, then is there any obligation to, on the part of the commissioner? Uh, inform the other commissioners?
So if you were to call me and ask me a couple of questions about an item.
Yeah.
I got you the answers, even if it was over the phone, I would likely put an email together, blind copying everybody to let them know the information.
So that's, that you're, that's a step, that would be a step.
You just ask the questions.
Okay, um. We are an advisory commission, except for the heritage trees. And on that, there is a, as I understand it, and as I recall from the last time that we had one of these things. Um, we do actually have a, a decision-making authority in that area, and. Um, I think that's spelled out in municipal code, but I'm not a hundred percent sure whether it's just sort of lore. But I, I think that's, it's just something that. Should be borne in mind for us that we are, we are, you know, ninety-eight percent advisory, but we've got that. Area where we're actually supposed to be making a decision, and there's some appeal process, et cetera. Um, and I also just wanted quickly to come back to this issue of discussions with the public. Um, my understanding of how it's supposed to work is that the public. Uh, is entitled to, to come and to present their views to us. About, and I, if we're talking about an agendized item. Um, and we take their comments into account. And maybe refer to them in our discussions and so forth, but there is no back and forth between us.
There is no back and forth.
But what I sort of got from what you said earlier was that if we're talking about an agendized item. Then it is okay to have some back and.
Not back and forth, but um, I think the, the example that Eric had done is that some, a member of the public brought up something. And you don't understand the point they were making. So can you elaborate on that? It's not necessarily back and forth. Can you, can you flesh out that thought a little bit more so I understand? That, that, I would see that not as a conversation, but as a prompt for a better explanation.
So we can ask to clarify, but not question, not a.
It's not like you're going, um, well, we don't want benches there, that, that's a horrible idea to put benches there. Why would you want to put benches there? With a member of the public, you know, but it's like, oh, you're proposing this new style of bench. Um, where did you get that information from? You know, just some clarifying, small thing, small.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, okay, yes, thank you.
Good questions, guys.
I covered everything. I don't think I have anything further. So that we can open it up for public comment if there.
We have two staff members on the line.
Just a reminder, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand button and unmute when called upon.
Madam Chair, we have no hands raised at this time.
Good, we'll be back for comments. Back to you. Just thank you.
If you, you find, what would be helpful for me is if you find this type of presentation valuable, you're my second commission. Trotting this out with, and um, we're trying to find ways to. Do more things like this, like make sure the city attorney comes and perhaps does a, a Brown Act or a P R A training or Public Records. Act training might be more um, relevant, and just do something. On a semi-regular basis, we, we did try, um, right before the pandemic struck, we did chair and vice chair training. And we invited all the incoming chairs and vice chairs together, because that's such a critical role of. Um, helping manage the meeting and um, learning to be a presiding officer. We thought we might try and do that annually. And just because everybody rotates through that seat, and so just to give a little bit more um, support, maybe on that. So any ideas like that, I would love to hear from you. You'd like to see more of this, or you know, maybe. I heard another city's doing this, could we do that here too, as far as our process of supporting you in your commissioner role? And um, providing you uh, the information and the access to changing, ever-changing laws that you need.
So that's just for a, a comment, which is just that it is, it is very helpful for these kinds of presentations to happen, should there be a code of conduct, whatever. Um, of course, it would be helpful to hear a presentation on that. Um, I also, I would just say, I think whenever there's a sort of high level. Um, city staff change, it would be useful to be introduced to, to that new person. Um, I, obviously, we're getting a new city manager sometime in the nearish future, um, so maybe having that person in there. Onboarded, um.
Come to each commission meeting and introduce themselves. That's a lovely idea, and I saw someone make a note about it.
You know, and, and you didn't really do that with, with Prisana, because, uh, I think probably because of when he started, but certainly. Um, I, I'd welcome the city attorney coming in.
Mr. Hall?
Um, I'll make a comment, and then I actually thought of one more question. Uh, one is, uh, I work in schools, and so I present to school boards every month. Uh, and I will say from the staff perspective, uh, if we give them a heads up of a question we're asking, that's like the best gift, because. It really, like, the worst thing is for us to ask a question and them not know the answer, because then they go, oh, we have to bring it back next time, like, they wanna. They wanna close it, so, I mean, if, if, if you're ever hesitating to ask a question, by all means, reach out. Um, and, and similarly, I remember there was a complicated tree ordinance, as a matter, you know, matter of fact, issue once. Years ago, where I called Sheila and said, I think we need this, the attorney here, because this question is gonna have. Weird, it was a weird complexity thing, and we're gonna need that feedback, and so she, she did that, and it was great. Um, the question I, I thought of is oftentimes, especially with this commission with Parks, there's so much cool stuff that the Parks Department does. And uh, they will email us and say, let us know if you're gonna come to the ice rink opening, or, uh, you know.
Extravaganza.
Extrav- yeah, whatever. Um, and I know at times they want to publicly notice that if there's gonna be. Three of us at that thing, and so there's some times where I'm not planning on doing that, and I'm. Out with my family, and we're downtown, like, oh, let's go, hey, it's the extravaganza, let's go by there, or whatever. What? What, is that just like, if we end up stumbling into a Parks Rec function, do we just like keep quiet and then that's okay?
Yes, 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 that is absolutely fine. There is an exception in the Brown Act that allows for social engagement things, and these. I think the activities and events that Parks and Rec put on probably definitely fall within that. And, and the thing is, for the Brown Act, for your involvement in it is self-policing, so you just, uh. You know, run into Heather in the park and say, hey, let's talk about next week's meeting, you know, you're just like, oh, here's my family, there's your family, yeah. Everybody have ice cream, you know, or whatever, that's really, you know, you just, you, you wear a different hat in that situation. So yet, we do agendize an off. Topic meeting, like if you're coming and we know there will be discussion about something, like if. All of the Park and Rec commissions wanted to go to the general plan and. Provide some kind of comment on one of their meetings, we would agendize that as a courtesy notice, so you could talk.
Yeah.
You know.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. This is great.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think my only comment is, um, I feel like. A town halls type meeting might actually be really good for our commission. We've never done it, and um. We have a couple of times where someone comes, like pickleball is the one that sticks out, or skateboarding. Where people come and they're, they get a little frustrated, because. Week after week, we're like, it's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, talk to staff, talk to staff, and you know, just having a listening session, I don't know if that's. In the rules and regs or something, but something like that for certain things might.
Can I tell you, that came up on Monday night at the council meeting too, about how different ways of doing community engagement and. To give the, the frustration, we clearly heard one minute is long enough.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I, I think there is an opportunity there. What comes to mind is community development and planning, and that when they have a big development project coming, they have neighborhood meetings first. Where, you know, topic-related meetings, or, and, and, and you know, the developer is there to address questions and to show off things, and. It's staff-led, so you know, that kind of a thing, and then they move on, and then it goes into the formal process. Um, there is an opportunity for us to do an, anything like that, it just, uh, it's resource-driven too. Um, and so it. Yeah, I mean, let Joanne take that away and noodle on it and see what she comes up with.
Yeah, I mean, it, it may not, it may not add value, but one of the ones that I think of is um, an amenities town hall, like. On a year, like, maybe it's not every year, but like, we're gonna talk about what do you want in your parks, come and tell us. So that we can just have that conversation, it's in one place, and you're not like, oh, you're gathering, oh, skateboarding, oh, pickleball, or whatever it is. Thank you for the presentation, it's great.
I think council might be thinking along the same lines.
Um, no particular comments other than to, to say. That this presentation, I think, has been very useful. We had a really good discussion here, and. To thank you for coming and to encourage, you know, more of this, I think you had mentioned a couple. Areas in which we might, you, maybe, maybe to hear from the city attorney or to. Hear from, hear from, from you again, and it, it uh, changes or things like it, from conduct that, that come along. I think this has been tremendously useful.
Okay, good, well, thank you, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you so much. This is great. It's good to get to see you. Um, I think too, just seeing. Our, what our scope is, what the priorities are, it's just a good reminder, right? I think that's super helpful to see that, so I would say, yeah, go, go to the other commissions. Come visit us at least once a year, you're welcome anytime, but this was super helpful, so.
Having the specific strategy that relates to our commission that you put up there was super helpful.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I would definitely repeat that at all the commissions.
Okay, yeah, okay, good. Now I wanna go. Joanne, did I miss any? Good, with that, we will move on. Next.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Commissioner's chair. Thank you for having me, and um, tonight I'll be speaking to the um, five-year capital improvement plan. And um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank uh, Clerk Holt, because. She gave me a wonderful segue when she mentioned that um, there's a fight for budget money. So, using that, I'd just like to provide some background and just say that um. Our capital improvement plan, because there is a fight for budget money, is. Mostly largely um, funded through in lieu fees. And what that means is that it's funded by developer contributions when um, they are uh, building. Whether it's one home or a multi-unit development, that is largely the way that we fund our projects. So, once um, we have some of these projects um, have been brought to us through the planning applications. We start working with them in order to identify when they will be. Um, at a point where they're ready to pull the application to get ready to build. And at that point, pay their fees, and knowing when the fees comes in. Will come in, enables us to plan for spending or um, banking this money. Um, for our various capital improvement projects. Um, as a reminder or refresher, or um, just to. Put it back in the picture, the past three years have been terribly. Misaligned for us in terms of what we've been expecting to receive and what we have actually received. So, uh, currently, what we've done is, um, because. Our estimates and our communications haven't been truth, well, not truthful, correct, or right, or due to the market conditions from COVID and what have you. Um, the recent interest rate hike, we don't know. Um, factually what will come in over the next couple of years. What we thought to do is um, talk about what we have on hand. So first and foremost, as per the um, agenda report, we have twelve million dollars um, in funds on hand at the moment. And we think those monies will be sufficient for the construction of the Central Park Playground. And as well as that, the East Hillsdale Playground. So those are gonna be the two projects that will be focused on over the next two years in terms of. We think that we can deliver those two projects with the funds that we have on hand. Um, moving forward, the project that will be um. Banking money for, as um, probably the layman way of um, of stating it, is going to be the sports field conversion. Which is that um, we understand that we have now uh, two synthetic field um, locations. And the synthetic fields have got a um, life expectancy of eight to ten years. So we expect that in approximately five years, we may have to re-turf, that's the right term for it. But um, reinstall um, new synthetic turf. On those fields, so we're gonna have to start putting some money away in order to be able to meet that, that requirement. And then on top of that, we also have um, a mind to start putting some money away towards the. Uh, rest of the renovation of Central Park, because um. Although everyone is very excited about the fact that we're doing the playground and the fallen heroes memorial. In fact, the master plan speaks to additional works that will happen to the surrounding areas. So um, those will have to be funded somehow, and therefore we will need to start putting some money away for that. One of the things that I would like to bring to your attention is that. The capital improvement plan isn't specifically about works to be constructed. At this point, what this is, is about the. Funding reserves that need to be satisfied ahead of a project. Funding reserves that need to be satisfied ahead of a project being completed. So even though we say that we're gonna put, you know, there's, there's monies here for the next three years. We won't actually be doing work on some of these projects. This is just a case of. We have to start putting some money away so that in three years' time, we are ready to actually do the work then. So even though there's monies there, it doesn't necessarily mean that there will be. Works completed or started in those particular years that the money is, um, is in. Um, as well as that. There are, um, numerous unfunded projects and they are funded because of the fact that, A. We weren't expecting them to 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 actually, um, raising priorities so that they needed our attention. So for instance, the, um, the roof at the Japanese Gardens Center needs to be replaced. That's something that we weren't aware, that we didn't plan for or weren't anticipating. However. It's in a state of disrepair, so somehow we need to find funds for those. And what we've done in this sheet is they have been marked as UN, which means unfunded. And, um, we are hoping that over the next year or so. The, um, finance department and, uh, can can hopefully find some breathing space there to provide some funds. For us to renovate those, um, those projects that we weren't. Anticipating would need our attention. Um, as well as that, there's, um, some, uh, other funding sources in also include the general fund, which is denoted as GF. And then, um, there's also some, an opportunity for measure rest monies. But again, that's, um, that's all from approval from the Citizens Oversight Committee. So at this point. What we have done is we've put together a sheet that represents what will be. Presented to City Council at, um, I believe, um, in June by the, uh, finance manager. And, um, this view is somewhat more granular, so it has more detail. So therefore, when we say that we are going to be doing, um. For instance, citywide play area upgrade. It breaks it out into all the different playgrounds. So therefore. You know exactly which playgrounds we are talking about are going to be, um, are up for consideration. So in this particular, um, in this particular, um, sheet, you can see that. Washington, Los Prados and West Hills, they are probably the next parks after. That we'll focus on once the current projects are in, um, are are completed.
The formulation for how part these different parks are prioritized.
Um, they are prioritized based on the fact that, um, we kind, we, well, the, the, the. Industry kind of, um, looks at a twenty year life cycle for, um, for structures. So once we, once we, once a playground, not necessarily at twenty years, we start saying let's spend money on it, but. If the structures have started falling into disrepair and pa- uh, parts of these. Replacement paths are impossible to get, that's one thing. If they don't meet ADA, is another kind of consideration. So if that goes, you know, we want them to be equally accessible by all children, um, that uses playgrounds. If community feels particularly strong about these and they bring them to our attention. And then on top of that, um, we also have a parks ecosystem. So we're trying to make sure that. The whole city is serviced equally as opposed to just, you know, renovating all the parks on, for instance. On the east side versus the west side and what have you, yeah. So we'd like to think about the whole geographic, um, spread in terms of, you know, what. What happens. So usually the parks that, um. We bring this, and this is the part where you're the advisory committee. So the. The managers get together and we discuss that with, um, with these, with with Joanne, and we kind of come up with a. Which is the most important and for what reason, and we put them here. And of course, as I said. We break them out granularly so you can see exactly why, and therefore, if you'd like to provide advice, otherwise, obviously you can. So that's the other, um, that's the other, uh, reason for the granularity.
The other consideration that I would just wanna point out is safety issues, um, that, um, maybe arise, um. For a piece of equipment that may not be, um, at the twenty year lifespan, but causing other issues for us. So we prioritize those.
I'm just, so the reason why I ask is, like, I live close by to Sunny Bray Park and Concord Park, and I think of them as being very similar and. Being a little bit sad and old. Uh, I know those are not the technical terms, um, but obviously Sunny Bray Park is there and Concord isn't. And sorry to get into the weeds about that specifically, but I'm ju- I was just surprised that it's not there.
So I think we have a lot of needs.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. It's like, I know all of our parks are.
Yes, they are. Um, and I think that we are probably gonna take a different approach as to how we. Address that, um, because I know what's frustrating, um, probably as much for staff as well as for the community. Is some of these master planning processes that take a really long time and then going through and trying to implement them. And so we will look at direct replacements, um, and trying to engage the community and get their feedback about. Themes and things that they're interested in that neighborhood in order to be able to facilitate that in a more timely fashion. And, um, looking at different, um. Ways in which to fund that through grants and such. And so having these things documented in this particular way helps us. To make the argument that we are going to do this work, which allows us to have a more robust chance at getting funding for them. So, um, I think there's a lot of work to do in this, um, asset management and determining, and so. Um, we're gonna be working on that all through the next coming year as well.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, um, it's, my presentation is quite short this evening because of the fact that, like I said, and. Fortunately, because of the fact that we're not sure what funds are coming in, we've just basically, um, focused on what we have on hand. And then the rest of it is, um, kind of like a. A least best outcome in terms of the monies that will come in. So, um, we are expecting, um. An injection of funds hopefully to come in. Later this year, um, to, that could be, um, sizable. However, we don't wanna counter chickens until they've hatched, counter eggs, sorry, until they've hatched. So we'll, you know. At that point, we'll, um, hopefully be able to provide an update because, um. You know, the example that we keep using is that last year we were expecting three million, and I think we've got something like seventy five thousand dollars. So. It's, um, you know. Yeah, so there you go. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, pleasure.
Start this way.
I'm trying to get from the numbers that you have here for the East Hillsdale Play Area. And the Central Park, um, playground project, uh, to twelve million dollars. And I can't.
Yep, 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 no worries. I'll, I'll explain that. So, um, so these are monies that we are going to be banking into these projects. Okay, so if you can imagine, there's a, uh, there would be a column that is not here, but, um, if you, so. The previous five year plan has put monies away. So this isn't, um. This isn't the money that we have in the bank. These are the monies that we are hoping to.
Add to the pot.
Yeah, exactly right.
Okay.
And that's the point that I was trying to make earlier, that this is about the money that we're gonna be banking, if that's the right term. Um, yeah, but our, our fund thirty-two has got approximately twelve million dollars in it, and that's the fund that is. Funds going to, yeah.
And you're thinking that that twelve million dollars is going to be, uh. Uh, fully utilized on these two projects. That's what it's gonna take to get them done. And these other, the numbers that we're looking at here are additional amounts that are, you went, for example, East Hillsdale. You're to, the, you're planning to inject another seven hundred fifty thousand dollars into what you've got put aside for that. I got it. Okay, thank you. Uh, that's the only question I have, so.
Question, Monica. Sure. Um, all right, so. I'm a little unclear within like a category, let's say, let's take unfunded. I'm unclear about a priority list. From this, is that, does that exist somewhere, like?
Yeah.
Uh, the first five hundred thousand we get is gonna go to this. The second five hundred thousand we get is gonna go to that.
So, um.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not sure how I can, I'm gonna email you the sheet in just a second, um, there. Uh, yeah, so you can bring that up. So we've, um, there was a comprehensive list of, um. Of projects that were, um, uh, shared to us from, uh, by finance and. Hold on, what is the best way to do this? My apologies. And then what I've done is, well, not what I've done, I've. Only, um, filtered for the ones that are for Parks and Rec, but basically, um, once again, even with those projects. Joanne asked. Parks and, uh, landscapes, landscape resources manager Ron to kind of give us a. Um, lay of the land in terms of what are the ones that are most high priority. So he did that and. I'll share that. We should be able to bring it up.
So we take the, um, unfunded list and then we assign high, medium and low priority to them. Um, and so we would address any monies that come into the high first, um, and then so on and so forth.
Okay, and, um. Does the highest priority one get completely funded before you move on to the next, or it's kind of like, and I also understand it's probably fluid.
Yeah, it, you know, uh, of course. You all went through this process last year, right? And so we assigned numbers to the twenty-two, twenty-three, and then no money came in. So we had to move all of those numbers. So it's a little bit of a game, um, and so, um. I'm sure there are years where we got more money than we were expecting and so that we could kind of decipher what made the most sense, but it. Really depends on how much money comes in as to how you're gonna assign it, right? So, I mean, I'd rather if we get five hundred thousand dollars and there's a project that's five hundred thousand dollars, let's move forward with that and try and get something accomplished. Um, but it all kind of depends on what the amount really is that the project costs and how much money we have. Um, that we didn't anticipate. So it's super difficult. It's. I wish there was an easier explanation, but there's not.
Maybe just scroll up. So these are all the projects that, um, and then if you, that we have, and then if you scroll to the. Yep, and then if you scroll to the right. If you scroll to the right a little bit more. Yep, so we've got the priority there. Priority, low, medium and high. And I believe there's only five that are high priority, um. And they are, um, the. We've got obviously a couple of refurbishments of restrooms, um, there's, uh, the. Parking lots because of the fact that if we don't fix them, they're just gonna get worse and worse and worse and worse, and they become a, um, trip hazard and what have you. Um, there's a golf bunker that needs to be replaced, um, repaired. And then last but not least, I believe it's the Japanese, um, Garden Center. So, um, that's, uh. That's, yeah, that's pretty much it. And we've consolidated all the, um, resurfacing projects because regardless of location, they all have to be. They all have to be researched. We've got like five parking lots that need to be done. Um, with some urgency because they just get worse and worse, and, um, this lorry seal that we use is. Kind of not enough sometimes, and they just get worse as the years go by. So that's, um, that's how we do it. Yeah. And then, of course, based on how much money the. What capacity is there from the general fund or measure rest or wherever else the money will come from. Um, like Joanne said, it's either priority or what fits in that funding envelope, because sometimes. You can't, you know, you can only afford to fix what you can afford to fix as opposed to what you want to fix maybe. So, yeah.
Um, I don't know if this is a typo, but under Bay Meadows Community Park, the description says rehabilitate Laurelwood Park.
I believe you're correct. I was just. I saw that when it was on the screen. I was like, why does it say that there? But yes, you're correct.
Okay, um, and then I see a hundred thousand for this fiscal year for the facilities master plan. Does that mean we're going to see it this year?
Um, no, there's actually more than, um, a hundred thousand. There's, um, there's, uh, in total, there's six point. One million dollars, and we have a regression facilities strategic master plan, and, um. We're gonna actually, if, uh, i- if you, again, if you look at the, um, the purpose. And Joanne can speak, um, more in depth to it, we're gonna be doing a pool assessment. Um, starting at King Pool and the hundred thousand, I believe, is for Joinville. So, um, we're gonna do a pool assessment to en- ensure that they are, um. Viable, usable, ADA accessible.
Yeah, we wanna keep our pools operating so we can teach, um, everybody how to swim. Um, it's a priority and, um. I think that, um. Uh, for moving forward, um, assessing, um, King specifically. Um, will allow us to be nimble, um, in allowing us to use King Center as a resource center. Um, for emergency purposes, which unfortunately is becoming also often. Um, and one of the requirements is shower facilities, and so it really will help us with getting. Additional funding or grant funding to be able to kind of piggyback on that. Um, in order to make the renovations that are necessary to keep the pool operational, so.
Um, speaking of grant funding, it. It doesn't seem like it's in here at all as a potential source.
So, yep, so this year we've got, um, we'll be claiming six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for, um, for Real Park. So that's actually, um, we're in the process of working now with the Office of, um, Grants, um, from the state. So we're expect, we're hoping for a visit to take place soon, whether representative will come out and. Confirm that it's completed, and then we can commence the, uh, the application for the, for the monies. And then East Hillsdale Park has got, I think, two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-eight. Um, that is, um.
Sure about that?
I can. Yeah, um, that we've got, um, that we've been, we, we've actually entered a contract. With, again, with the state in order to deliver that, um. Currently, the contract is, uh, over the next couple of years, so they're aware of that. And, um, we've basi- we've completed all the. Soft steps for the application, and we are now waiting to start actual the construction prior to. You can, we, the, the, the agreement that we've entered and the indication that we've given is that we would like to claim the monies in full in one. Go, once the, um, the projects are completed. Um, there are numerous other grants that we've, that we are looking at, um. However, some of them, some we tend to miss out on based on the fact that our median income is so high. In the context of California. So therefore, you know, we just don't. San Mateo unfortunately doesn't have enough. Doesn't meet enough of the parameters to, um, to 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 apply for these. But we've been very active this year in considering all epic, all options that are coming our way because it's, um, you know, it would be released not to.
Okay, yeah, and as you were talking, I realized I'd forgotten the purpose of this again, which is to forecast what we need to put aside from. These particular buckets. So there's somewhere else that we look at. Okay. Okay, um, and then, uh. Is, um, is meas- measure C, C C gonna be an option like S? Uh, were parks mentioned in there?
I don't know exactly what the, um. The bond. I don't think that's been delineated yet, but I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility.
Um, and then I think this is my last question. Um, it's just a general question of. What is holding us back from doing more? Is it funding? Is it staff? Is it a combo? Like, is it really, we just can't fund all of the things we wanna do and we can do?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really, um, we have a bunch of. Things we need to address and there's just not enough money. Um, and, um. I think if we had the money, we'd find the staff to do it. Um, so, yeah, it, and it really, you know, I think that just. You know, cities kind of operate, um, differently than you would at your own home, right? Like you prepare, I need a roof in five years. I'm gonna start say, it's, you know, there are. Like you prepare, I need a roof in five years, I'm gonna start saying it's, you know, there are six roofs that we need to replace and so it's just kind of trying to prioritize and a lot of it is putting out fires and so you know, something comes up and so the money that you thought you were gonna have to do X, you actually have to use to do Y, so it's a little bit of that. Um and then just aging infrastructure that just has not been addressed. Um a- a- and then I will say, one of the biggest components is um, you know, the ADA component because kind of whenever you do anything now, it triggers all of these things and they're costly. Um and costs is, costs are going up um and up and up and it's even difficult to estimate because the prices go up so much. Um in Cupertino, I did a very small tot lot park that we had three hundred thousand dollars of funding for and it was literally like three pieces of equipment, uh but because of all the ADA upgrades and path of travel that needed to be done, you know, it just can kind of steamroll um a little bit beyond what you could even possibly imagine to just upgrade three little pieces of equipment for two to five year olds. So it's a little bit um challenging with COVID as well with supplying to make, you know, supply chain issues and um just getting things delivered and trying to coordinate. Um so there are a lot of challenges now I think that um we haven't faced before and it's getting harder to even estimate and be in the neighborhood. Which will be challenging to deliver projects.
I will also add that um we spent approximately two million dollars on the real park and that's kind of the budget that we have for East Hillsdale. So if each park is likely for four renovations, two million dollars and there's, you know, twenty-six parks, then you know, and most parks has has, you know, need something, so it's um, it's probably a combination of both, yeah.
Thank you. Um so see, you know, so one thing in the future, a total for the fiscal year would be helpful. Cause I was doing my math down and um I missed a decimal or something, um but that's okay, I I got it.
Uh if I can't, I'm sorry, I thought it scrolled, but actually there's a, there's a table down the bottom that um that just didn't fit on the sheet, um Commissioner Home, but it's it's uh
It's up, you have it down in the bottom. There it is.
Yeah, there's another table down the bottom here that talks about how much is um, you know, what
Was, cause that you you've had that, you've had that in the past.
Yeah, and like I said, it's just uh There's, yeah, there's room for improvement. I I I appreciate your feedback, so um I will, I will work hard next year. But uh yes, so.
So, so to that, we um, you know, you're you're a little over two million for next year and then you jump to nineteen and then forty-six. Then seventy-five and then down to two and then up to a hundred and forty-six. It feels like you're just like throwing the kitchen sink out at the end. And and so, so is there, is there more that's dropped off the list that you know about? Or did you just basically everything you knew about that didn't happen by year four? Or didn't, didn't get broken up by year four, you throw in your five and then you roll that forward at the next time?
Um we, no, we, I think what we've got here is um, we've been a little bit conservative in terms of our estimates, but we haven't actually um, we haven't discounted too many things. Some of the bigger numbers that you've got are like I think there's forty million dollars in the um there it is, in the Bay Meadows Community Park, you know, um we don't even have a master plan, like we we're nowhere near that, so that's kind of like a, you know, a down the road kind of thing. However, I can tell you that even for years, you know, six to ten, we've already got some projects that are sitting there. For instance, we know that, you know, there might be an irrigation project to the tune of five million dollars. So this, you know, the the profile doesn't improve, it doesn't, it's not as if that, so if you're expecting a hump and then a dip.
Yeah.
It's unlikely. I think it's just gonna be a continuous, you know.
I think what we try to do the best job of is determining what projects are gonna be banking money with us for next year and try and get next year as close to what we actually anticipate and then the rest is kind of you know, our best estimate. Um but I think that we get better at um and it's been hard, right, with COVID, cause there's been three years of, we have no idea. Um so I think as things pick up, it'll get, there'll be more even keel and maybe we can balance some of these out, but um we don't wanna lose sight of these big projects either, um and the amount of funding that they may take. So that's why we kind of lump them in like at the end in a big way.
And in in projecting out multi-years, are you putting escalation or is this all in today's construction dollars?
It's all in today's construction dollars.
Okay. Um and then where does the park facility master plan fit into this? As far as those projects, cause I, it looks like some of these projects that are three or four or five years out are are projects from that were discussed heavily in the facility master plan for the parks.
So I would re um well, hmm, in reading the facilities master plan, it's more of an assessment as opposed to a plan.
Yeah.
There are options, um and there are different paths forward. Um but I think what um my takeaway is, is that we have a lot of facilities that we currently have that we need to address the issues and we have to figure out how to prioritize those through those assessments. And so that's why you see the King Pool as kind of the next step to that. Um and I, I further assessment will be done as projects come up that are necessary to keep programs running.
And
So I'm still in that process, I'm nine months in, so it's it's still a work in progress, but um I think that's what my takeaway was for this process, for next steps in that master plan assessment.
And tied to that, we, you know, we haven't looked at that in a number of years, but um you know, at the time it was, these are all the things that the city wants or and a lot of it was needs. You know, I remember there was a lot of discussion about the pools uh and the fact that they weren't ADA compliant, they weren't, you know, there was all those components cost. Uh and so it was this big huge multimillion dollar price tag out there and it was like, well, the way we're gonna get this is council, does a bond. Um and and so where, where are we in that process of does, does this then become a tool that goes to council and says, see, we've got these some, some really big numbers out here? We need to get serious about that discussion or not, or um is that just still this sort of like pie in the sky thing that has, it's just gonna get chipped away at by like the bare minimum to be to maintain pool functionality or maintain accessibility, or we, where we need to upgrade something?
Yeah, I think we need to come back and revisit that conversation. Obviously, um we'll be having new city manager, we have four new council members. So there are a lot of, I think, conversations that need to happen, um and so in in order to just address and do something since there's no location that's been designated for a new facility or anything like that. I I think that doing some kind of traction to get something accomplished before we have to shut a facility down um is really necessary. So I think we need to look at it holistically. We have a lot of things that we need to fund to keep going.
Yeah.
Um not to do better, not to do more, not to do, you know, fancy, um and I think that um you know, we do need to have these conversations. I'm sure these conversations will come up as this is presented to council. Um and it's just strategizing about the best way um to move forward in that respect. Um the thing that I like to always bring up um that uh, you know, I think we all talk about all these other cities are building new rec centers, right? And I'm super jealous, congratulations, it's great, um but they all have one facility. San Mateo doesn't, San Mateo has many facilities and so it's not as easy and turnkey as a process. And so um I think that's kind of where the challenge is, is um most places don't even have a pool, we have two pools. And so it it's that kind of playing those things against each other where um you know, uh just trying to be mindful about keeping the lights on and things moving and being able to provide programming because the last thing I would want is the pool to be closed for ten years because
Yeah.
we haven't even thought about how we're gonna address it, so um but yes, I think that comes back into the conversation at some point. Yeah.
I think it, I mean, it kind of ties to the comment that Heather had earlier um about the town hall and the, we've had various groups in the past and one of the things when it was closer to where we'd have the discussions on the master plan, we could say, well, we're sorry, we just had that discussion as a year-long process and and that's sort of memorialized. And so we'll take it and we'll put on the list for the next time we have that discussion, but we're not opening that discussion up now. Um I think at a certain point, if you, if you don't have the discussions for multiple years, it probably needs to get readdressed as a, as an item, either in the, this is, this is how that changes fiscally or or this is how we reassess it, um cause it's, it's hard and it's hard for the public in the terms of these projects that are multiple years. And I mean, you know, we had, we reviewed designs for Central Park during COVID and and like, you know, members of the public is, oh, I heard you get, that was on the agenda, are you guys building it? I was like, that's gonna be, it's gonna be a while, you know, and so I think that that's uh important to revisit.
For sure.
In the, in the sort of understanding where they are. Um and then the last question was, there's the um, where'd it go? The Shoreline Parks Master Plan, what's that? That's a big dollar.
Yeah, so um the Shoreline Parks Master Plan has to do with um both Seal Point Rider Park, um the parks over uh that are along the shoreline and the pathways and um the the redeveloped area that is now the dog parks and such. Um and so um there's a lot of opportunities there and um I also realize that it's kind of hard to put a price with a master plan when you don't have a master plan. So again, it's one of these things that we're, it's a priority and we're trying to save for it, but we kind of don't know what we don't know, so um but again, the frustration of not having something to to follow is um the the challenge as well. So yeah, so that's the placeholder for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, um Nick, I'm wondering if you can tell me if measure S funding has money, like the money that's been coming in, if it's been consistent over time?
So um the money that's been coming into action, or the money that's been coming in generally to measures. Okay, so um I'm unsure as to the money that's been coming into measure S as a fund on its own because of the fact that it's handled by um it's handled by the finance um department. And then the the way that the funds are dispersed, like I said earlier, there's a um citizen oversight committee that makes the decisions. However, um we've been consistent in drawing um funds from them from that fund for the uh, for the utilization for the uh get-around program, senior transportation. And this year what we have is um there is a, they might be funding the synthetic field replacement out of that money. So um that's uh, which is approximately two million dollars. And so I I don't wanna speak to it because of the fact that I don't know, so I don't like a comment that um could be incorrect, but that's the they're the two things that um we're hoping to fund from that, from that area.
Okay, um that's helpful. Um the other thing is, I was struck Nick, when you were talking about how we've uh our success or I should say the individual resident's success um prevents us from applying for certain grant funding. Um I wonder to what extent we've looked into private grant funding or private foundation money um around park investment. And if we've ever explored or if this is a possibility to have a Parks Foundation in San Mateo, I mean, we do have a Parks Foundation. But to what extent do they, like, what do they do and are there ways in which?
Okay, so I'll answer.
They can be doing more.
Yep, so first and foremost, um like I said, uh there's, there is, there are I'm on a mailing list that basically gets sent every single fund that there, sorry, grant that there is. The um, the ones, the the state, the state ones, like I said, have got certain parameters that are very hard for us to make. So there was one that we looked at recently and um we thought about the area surrounding um Gateway Park where the um the little stream is and what have you. And unfortunately, only one census tract there met the criteria, but none of the surrounding ones did. So therefore, because of the fact that you have to have like a num, like, you know, an adjacent one and what have you, we just didn't meet it. And um compared to say, a city like Fresno, you know, our median income levels are too high, so therefore um it's much harder for us to um to be able to do that. So that's for the state or government ones. In terms of the private ones, the ones that I've seen this year, um they tend, um this, there was one from, they they basically tend to be either super competitive or um again, it's very hard for us to make a compulsive argument, considering that there are prob- there again, even though they're not census tract based, there are other communities that are in much worse shape than San Mateo will ever be. So it makes it very, very difficult, so um yeah, it's, in that way, it's kind of stacked against us.
And then what about the Parks Foundation?
The Parks Foundation, we do have one, they do do some fundraising, um I understand that they have um, they may, the, obviously they do fundraising, so they may have, but we've never um, not we've never, um we haven't, um to my knowledge, we haven't um the the relationship isn't, um but isn't, but I don't know whether they can, I mean, for them, for a meaningful contribution again, would have to be like a park is two million dollars, so I don't know how, you know, how how robust they are, but it's um
So the the foundation is actually um handling the fundraising effort for the Fallen Heroes Memorial. And so um I think that um, so what I um we just had this conversation today and emails saying there's two hundred and fifteen thousand that are sitting in the Park and Rec Foundation that were for the Fallen Heroes Memorial, which are now in the process of being transferred to the city. And they have in total four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in there, so you take out that two fifteen, you're looking, they have around two hundred something. But we are looking at other opportunities um and um other ways to fund things because we're going to have to.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I just wanna say, um, you know, I've heard whispers of a, of a bond for Parks and Facilities for a long time. Um, you know, certainly looking at the year out numbers, I just don't know where you come up with the money and so um I don't know, um I, that's not a question, but um I I guess I I'll just say I'm I'm concerned about how we meet all these obligations.
That concludes my, my, what I have to say. No, I don't have any more questions. I just, I don't, I mean, Nick, unless you can explain it to me in a different way, but I
The only thing that I can say is that we, when we start making these plans, we obviously make them on anticipated revenues and unfortunately, like I said, they have in the past three years have been particularly bad because of everything that's, that's happened, you know, across the country, across the world. Um we're hoping that once, you know, the economy gets kind of, you know, regulated again and people start doing what they used to do, then it will, you know, the new normal, basically, the, you know, that will happen. We do have a number of projects in the pipeline and I wish I could speak to them more, however, until the money comes in, it's just hard to say that the money's going to come in because that's, that's what we've been doing for the past three years, I mean, to just have them, have them materialize.
Final question is, there are actually still mine, but in terms of uh and this may be going too far, but have we ever really, you said that there's some hesitation maybe with the foundation, just giving, we're not sure how much they can really raise in terms of impact. Have we, I'm just curious, have we ever tried to partner with them to really do something bigger that would have impact? Or are we, to your point, I'm looking at other revenue sources, are we really getting serious about trying to figure out what other options we have, given the realities? We're getting serious, for sure. So yes, I've had, I've had conversations with the foundation um about fundraising effort, efforts for Central Park specifically, um and I think we're gonna have to get creative um to even be able to deliver that project, quite frankly, so um we're, we're in talks, but happy to hear any ideas or um, you know, happy to pursue whatever um ideas that you may have. Um but yeah, we're gonna have to do some serious um campaigning to get some funds.
Good.
Yes, my only observation is just that I think you've got a lot of families around here that I sit and talk to who who see this. And to your point earlier, maybe town hall is a way to get people engaged on it, but I think most people think, hey, I pay my property taxes, that's going to the park. I don't think people begin to understand the realities of how this is done and where their money goes and doesn't go. And like if you could find easier said than done, but I think if we could find ways to activate some of that, you could probably chip it away at a few of the the wishlist items.
I agree, I agree. Agree, great, great feedback.
Commissioner Hall, did you have a?
I was just gonna say to your, to your question, I think the Parks Department partnered with the foundation on the Bearsford Playground. Was the last like partnership, but I don't think the, the raise was huge.
Yeah.
Like, cuz you gotta sell a lot of bricks to, you know, and.
Yeah, we've done, they've done that, they do, I think at the summer music series, they do, they put a um wine stand. So they do things like that, but it's, you know, it's, um like I said, the monies that we're talking here are um.
They're big.
Yeah.
Are we in comments yet? So we got a public comment and then we can come back. I don't wanna get us in trouble with the truth in the room. Um so with that, we'll open it for public comments. If you're on Zoom, please rate, please use the raise hand button to be called on and unmute only when called upon.
Uh we have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, good, well, that will come back to uh the commission for comments.
I have it, fundraising, let's do it. I mean, we need to, we really do need to do that, I mean. Right here, you're saying we don't qualify for grants because our median income is too high, so let's tap into that median income. High and um figure that out, cuz yeah, I think we raised this last time, I think you and I raised it, like, what can we do? I mean, selling bricks, selling wine at the festivals, that's just dollars, it's nothing, um let's get some private funding. And get some of these things funded, um. My other comment, just in general, is that, like. Uh we can't really comment on the numbers, right? We're not the numbers people, these are all kind of guesses anyway. I think where we would be most valuable is actually in that priority list, if we can look a little bit more transparent at what. What, what, where are the priorities here um for all the unfunded stuff, for the in-lu fees and. The criteria that um Sarah was asking about, like, how do we decide that that's a high priority or a low priority? I feel like that's a little bit more where we could put in some better input than, oh, okay, three million dollars for this project. Um, no idea, no idea if that would be that way, so um, yeah, and just like. Maybe reorder the table from that priority or have the column of the high median level.
I couldn't agree more.
All right, on the same page, okay, that was my points.
I just think, well, I, contrary to the question of fundraising and private fundraising, I think the um. The magnitude is so great that, that, cuz I, I deal in. School construction and, and, you know, I'm doing three school playgrounds this summer and all of them are equal or more expensive than this. And it's um like, the, to me, the only path is a bond and, and sooner than later. Um, to meet some of these needs and, and so, I mean, I would say um. That we prioritize, this, I'm drifting into the advocacy we're not supposed to do, but this is advocacy for the commission, so I'll, I'll consider that okay.
Um I can turn that into a question. Um I, I thought in the, actually in uh your presentation, I thought there was a line item in the strategic plan for. Bond or something, did I miss that? Public Works plus?
It was to, to find um ways to fund, um.
This is strategic.
Yes.
It is one of the strategic um objectives.
Perfect, there you go.
There, there we go, so.
Question.
I, I think it definitely, I mean, there are a lot of. Needs in the city and challenges, um but I think that. I think that there's, there's gotta be a bigger shot in the arm to the, the project list and the only way to get there really. Is with a, with a large-scale CY bond. And, and these are like. I deal with like a fraction of the land you deal with and I have a half a billion dollars and I need an extra billion, so, I mean.
Commissioner Fields.
Uh thank you, um I um will reiterate the comments that I made when I interrupted my own questions with comments. Um and just say, uh like, uh the vice chair said, um. I think we would enjoy and also be interested in, in digging into sort of the priority list a little bit more and also the criteria for upgrades. I, I do really think there's a lot of potential in the Parks Foundation, you know, we see in the area. I know this isn't exactly the same, but we see education foundations really do a lot um in our region, including um. You know, corporate partnerships and other things, I would just also wanna bring up, I know, I can't even remember when we did this, but at one point we did have a discussion on. Naming or not naming things within parks and I wanna make sure that we give clear guidelines and boundaries around that, especially if we start doing a lot of. A lot more private fundraising, um you know, that we don't end up putting billboards in our parks, um. Um i- is it sort of a, an advisory piece I'd like to, to steer clear of, um. But I, I do also think that that's um, that's something that gets us a little bit further, but I don't think it gets us to the finish line. On all these projects and, and also just say, you know, to me, something that makes San Mateo the best city on the peninsula. Is, is all of our parks and our facilities, it really makes us a special city and it makes us different from a lot of other cities. Um and so I think that when we think about the character of our city, parks are a huge, important piece of that. Um and, and however we can engage more people in, in thinking about San Mateo as this great place where people gather and want to gather. I think the better and, and I think some of that comes through, through perhaps some private funding, but I think it, it more broadly comes through. Um, probably not us coming together and then putting up a pod.
Commissioner Madison. I just want to support both the uh recommendations that have been made around looking closely at. At priorities and perhaps with a view as well to, when you, when you look at the whole list of projects. Um assessing feasibility and whether we have the capacity in a, in a reasonable timeframe. To do all of these things or whether some, maybe there's a priority three. Uh and that is, this is what we would really love to do, but we question whether that's going to be possible. In whatever timeframe we set up, uh and the other is the bond issue. Um, you know, I, I agree strongly with Commissioner Hall about that, that we're looking at very large numbers here. And I appreciate uh the, that everyone's interested in the Parks Foundation and what they might be able to do, what I'm hearing about them. Is that it's a group that deals in hundreds of thousands and we're, we're looking at wanting to deal in the tens and hundreds of millions. And I think, I don't know what the city's overall bonded indebtedness is or, or what it's, what it's financial. Situation is and that's not within our purview anyway, uh but. I just, I don't see any other way for the city to raise the amounts of money that it, that are needed to really do. These ambitious plans that we have built up over the, over, to say, the last five years. You know, people back before COVID and, you know, you look at, think about things like Central Park and the recreation facilities plan. Um and Bay Meadows Park, um, you know, th- these are, these are things that. I mean, I remember the discussions of it, you know, we're gonna build this and we're wanting to do that and so forth and, and. Um. It's a different world now, and if we really wanna do these things, we have to find a way to raise some of these numbers that are at, in use, in use out here. Projections, understanding that the out-year projections are what they are and in any forecast, the out-year projections are. You know, they're indicative at best, but um. It's, i- that, that's how we're going to be able to raise money like that, if we could get private funding on that scale, it'd be wonderful, right? I don't know how that gets accomplished and um, so may, maybe uh, it's, it's on you to.
Sounds like it.
Try to, try to be, and, and obviously in collaboration with others, um to try to find a way forward on that, but. Um, one way or another, we're, I think we have to be thinking, you know, look at the numbers we want to raise and then. Consider means that are, that are adequate to that kind of goal.
Agreed.
So, that's all.
No, agree with what everyone said, I, I think your idea of using us to kind of rank. Priority areas against unfunded makes a lot of sense, agree strongly, Eric, your point is a good one on the bond, like. I just feel like use the foundation, like, let's put some muscle behind that and see if it's a way to get the community involved, even if it's not gonna completely. Solve the financial issues, I just feel like there's an untapped opportunity there and I'd like us to take a crack at it, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I just wanted to be clear that I wasn't wanting, I wasn't supporting private funding for everything. I'm also very supportive of the bond, think it's gonna be necessary, I think what we're gonna be able to fund with private money is gonna be different. Um people don't wanna put their name on like fixing up an old building, they wanna put it on something splashy and new, so, yeah. All sources, all good.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to get creative in a whole host of different ways um for a lot of different things, um. You know, because it's parks and it's facilities and um. The numbers, the sheer numbers of parks and facilities is exponential here in San Mateo, which is awesome. But, you know, that affects, you know, how, how we're trying to accomplish everything, um cuz there is so much to accomplish, so I think that it. Is probably going to be some kind of combination of a lot of different things. Um but I'm excited about the possibilities, um so um we're just gonna have to get creative, yeah. Yeah. Great, I think that is it and we'll go to reports and announcements. Yes, um okay, so you guys had a few questions that I have answers to from last meeting. Um you asked about waiver of appeal fees for other commissions or the council. And um there are no waivers for appeals, um so. Um and I just wanted to also circle back cuz there was a question about when the last um tree appeal came here and it was in October twenty twenty. And it was upheld, so um it was not overturned, um so that was just circling back about the fee schedule, ADU impact fees. Um tax on residential buildings, CDD confirmed that ADUs are not subject to impact fees or taxes. I think that was your question potentially from last time, um and then you brought up picnic permit language regarding a cleaning fee. So it said a deposit and so staff are going back and changing that to say cleaning fee, so thank you for the feedback on that. Um I know there was a question about memorial plaques and dog park memorial, have not been able to. Get information on that yet, but I'm still working on it, um so that is on my TBD list. Um the only other uh couple of updates I have for you, um we saw each other last. Um a couple of months ago and we've had a lot of wind events, we've lost a lot of trees, um particularly at the golf course. Um and um I, I'm sure you all are aware of the tennis court fencing that blew down at Central Park that has been fixed and are back open. Um for um use, um but uh staff have been um, you know, kind of still assessing and, and um managing. Um storm-related issues, um last time we met, we talked about um. Both Central Park Playground and East Hillsdale Park Playground being in the design development, the uh design development. Um phase, they are both in seventy-five percent construction documents, I know there was a question, question about the. Uh construction plan, that is still being developed, so that will come forward once that is solidified, um but we're working on that. And the only other things that I wanna mention is we had Extravaganza um at Central Park, very well attended, I think it's. Partially because people have been inside in um staying out of the rain for a while, so it was very well attended, so um. Great event, uh this past uh Friday, we had uh Pal's Lights and Sirens event for their fundraiser, um very well attended as well. Um and a great event, um we do have an upcoming event with Pal um that I just wanted to mention, there's some flyers. Um over on the desk on your way out, but it is a mental health um matters. Um twenty twenty-three five K and it is in conjunction with um the Star Vista um organization. And there's a wellness fair and a five K run and walk, so encourage you to either participate or let um your friends and family know about it. Um and then um our park survey is up a little earlier than normal, which we will of course take feedback about amenities that people are interested in having in parks. Um but we have QR codes kind of at every park um with the signage and we're trying to um have it open for a little bit longer than we normally have. Um so that is up and running, um we also have a DOLA trial out at Central Park, um and so that. A DOLA do- dog off leash area, sorry. A few public commenters on that, so I just wanted to give you an update that.
What are the hours?
The hours are four PM to sunset.
Every day?
Every day.
Wow.
Yeah.
On the baseball field or?
No, there, it's over by the train area.
Okay.
Yeah, um so yes, the sporadic train, yes, um so that is started on Monday and we'll go through September, so we'll assess how that. Is um tracking, um and then last but not least, we're ramping up hiring for the summer and we are in desperate need of lifeguards and camp staff. So if you could spread the word, especially at the schools, um to let anybody know that um we're hiring, that would be uh so kind of you. We will be pushing out on all our social media and such, so um but that's all I have, sorry, that was a lot.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good, I think that's it. Um I just wanna self-promote for one second and say that I wrote an op-ed that was in the Daily Journal uh today and you should all read it. It relates back to the commissioners joining our board.
Oh wow.
Indirectly, but.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, we're adjourned.